Council, it's nice to be in front of you again. Tonight, we have in front of you the final Bevan Concept Master Plan. And I have a report in front of you with some recommendations and some information. I also have a bit of a presentation to go over the results of the Bevan Plan. So what I think I'll do is not do both. The report really is a summary of what's in the presentation. So first, acknowledge what the recommendations put forward for council tonight is to receive the presentation and the report. And then I'll walk you through everything, and at the end, we'll revisit these recommendations. But our hope is to recommend that council put this forward again to the Economic Development Steering Committee, so we can take some of the opportunities or recommendations that come out of this report and work with staff to bring something back to council that's a bit more like an implementation plan about how we're going to go and continue to seek development of these Bevan lands. So, we do have control. So as acknowledged, we're just going to go through a simple, here's the agenda for the presentation, just go through a simple background, talk about the existing conditions, in case you're not familiar with the Bevan lands are, talk about our planning processes, the different things that we looked at as far as what we have as a community for tools, what our regional labors have for studies and data and tools, and as well as the engagement that we did to collect some of the input that's informed this report. We'll go into the conceptual design itself, so I should say this report is two parts, you can think about it. One is a conceptual design, which is that visual piece of the organization of what the Bevan lands would look like. And the second part of it is a report that gives you some of that contextual information that we're looking for. We're going to talk about things like market assessments and that kind of stuff, to talk about not just how we're going to organize, but what are the opportunities and the types of industries that will be conducive to our values and the land opportunities there up there. And then finally, we'll go through some outcomes of recommendations, mostly around land uses and policy and planning tools. I'm grateful that Ken is here, because a lot of what this Bevan portal comes out is these tools that we can do to adhere to making sure that we get the development that we're looking for. So just to begin with, this is the very beginning, this is the scope of what we intended for the Bevan conceptual plan. And part of this is a reminder as well that this plan is being supported by the actual landowner right now. So there's portions in here that are a bit more marketing, that are a bit more business-focused, certainly around costing and stuff, that for them is information they're looking forward to be able to talk with prospective buyers. But the planning process and the review of public value, public interests, and that kind of stuff about what this land represents for us is really the tool and the piece that we took on. So existing conditions. It roughly accounts for 500 hectares of land zone for industrial use, and you know, this is split between I-2 lands, as well as the IGR, or the Industrial Greenway Reserve, which is specifically focused on cannabis production and silver culture. It is 84% of all the remaining vacant industrial land in the valley. I think my recent looks, Comox and Courtney were running at about less than 7% available to do the land. And so, of course, it's been long identified, this is not the first time this work has been done, it's been done exclusively, over and over again, by Seveds and others. We acknowledge it within our economic development strategy is a key thing, and just this year too, we've nailed down a bit more within your own council's own strategic priorities about the types of things that we want to get out of this opportunity. Looking at a planning focus, again, it's those two zones that we're looking at, the I-2 and the IGR. There is I-4, which is around the Comox Strathcona Waste Management Center, which allows for composting, recycling, and refuse disposal. We also have some guidelines from the OCP, and again, there's those words, industrial greenway, but we start to see things like recreation and working forest work their way in. Of course, the historic railway exists there, is something that our community identified as something that wanted to be maintained. And then, of course, within the OCP, we have a variety of development perimeter areas. And surprisingly, one of the outcomes that we'll see in the recommendations is here is that we don't have a DPA for industrial development. And we could also do some better work on incorporating wetlands and watercourses and connectivity into these types of development areas. When we talk about environmental attributes, of course, this is one of the big things that was very important to the stakeholders, we talked about with the Bevan lands, being it's located between the Morrison Creek headwaters and the Comox Valley watershed. Of course, there's also a lot of second growth, the aquifers, of course, council's familiar with this, played an important part, having to make decisions around well use and stuff like that. Trails and other types of things, and parks and community forests are important to us that we wanted to consider. And of course, there's, you know, there's always these things that come out of our OCP and others about what are important, the village supporting and protecting enhancements of the environment, and so on and so forth. We talked a little bit and researched a little bit more market trends, those examples there you see there is Pepperton and Whistler, and of course, Courtney's very own Tintown. We looked at what the types of demand around for industrial land in our area is, and so, you know, 340 to 430 acres over 30 years breaks into about 3.9 acres per year. You know, and that is sort of a mild estimate, it's simply based on what's happening in Courtney and Comox and where that demand is now. There should be a caveat, and there's a caveat in there that says what happens when you jump and put a whole bunch of land back onto the market and how what that's going to affect opportunities are. And I think in those cases, our planning tools again become much more important, because we don't know how that demand is going to be countered, and so the more tools, the more things we have in place to make sure that we have sort of a long-term planning and idea of what's going on. Types of industrial use are becoming much more diverse, you see that those spaces there, particularly in Pepperton and the Whistler area, are not your traditional industrial units. And so, of course, here, we do have a demand for mixtures of spaces, both smaller kind of manufacturing facilities, flexibility in that 1,500 to 10,000 square foot, but there's also a lot of single occupancy warehousing needs, so big spaces. And so, understanding that when we create spaces within our land, that we're looking at different sized lots and different opportunities in those ways. And of course, we looked at some of the sectors and ideas and the businesses that would be advantageous to be located in our community. Waste Management Center there, of course, makes anything related to the resources born out of that facility very enticing for our business, if that's diversion and recycling economy and clean energy like we're doing with the landfill gas. Construction in aggregate, aggregate is really big out there, we already have gravel pits, and you'll see later on, some of the recommendations is how a developer on those lands could actually use that gravel instead of digging holes, maybe take down some of the topography evenly over the space, so that it's, we're using things a little bit more thoughtfully. Food production and processing, of course, we're familiar that our first developer that's sort of in the gates and in the process right now is subdivision as a food producer. And both through the work of Seveds and this work that we did on this identifies agriculture, agro-industries, a big opportunity here for us, because we're located within the transportation network, we're thinking about things like storage, processing, distribution, cold storage, cold storage is a big thing that's in short supply. And one of the difficulties with these things is a lot of this research was done six months ago, and then COVID hit. And so, we are having a turn about how we think about economy, and that agro industry to me becomes much more interesting, because it solves food security issues, and you can see those types of economic ties strengthening simply because of that need. So we're positioned well for opportunities in there. Of course, the forestry sector is always important to us, although it is a declining industry. Green business, renewable energy, Jason at Hackeye and his partners, and as we get into the concept mode, you'll see areas of grouping and hugging and stuff like that, so there's opportunities around there. And of course, eco-industrial networking, and this is more just about finding synergies between businesses, much more of a sort of a circular economy idea of attracting eco-industries that have synergies with each other, and making sure that we are acknowledged within that type of network as a place where businesses want to be. We did a fair bit of stakeholder engagement, not just through myself and talking to people, we had a meeting of about 20 people, of 20 people that was held in October, that was attended by members of industry and stakeholders, it was intended by, it was attended by interest groups from behalf of the environment, we had the Morrison Stream Keepers there, we had the community forests there. We've also, I've also presented this plan to the watershed, the WAG Watership Advisory Group, I've gone and talked to the Courtney District game, and provided a bit more information while we're going, got their feedback. We certainly engaged landowners, Hancock to an extent, as they are, you know, somewhat supporting the development of this document, so they didn't have direct feedback into the document, but certainly attended stakeholders to understand where that industry demand and stuff was. The CVRD is a landholder out there, attended our stakeholder meetings, and most recently over the last six weeks, were given an opportunity to review this plan, and their input now is directly incorporated into this report. And you can see here, this is just a list of sort of the interests that we got out of the different stakeholder groups. Servicing infrastructure to protect the watershed, you're very familiar with, and we talk about that a fair bit, you know, this is one of the situations with the community with servicing that, you know, figuring out what our role is in it, we're not landowners, we're not developers, we are, so we're, you know, we're facilitators in a sense, and making sure that those conversations happen, but there's only so much we can do around that. Transportation from both ends of the road, people acknowledged as these lands get developed that there could be transportation pressures coming from that north end of Comox Lake Logging Road, if staff is driving in from Courtney and other places. Also, transportation on putting all that emphasis at Bevan and Cumberland Road, and now potentially the big trucks and everybody else turning there, plus all the dump traffic. And so, within their concept, you'll see we thought of other things, and maybe we can alleviate some of that pressures in other areas. Zoning changes, down zoning or split zoning, opportunities again to create a little bit of flexibility within space to attract different types of industry, as you see, our landowners nowadays are getting different types of demand. Again, finding synergies amongst like industries around waste management, and of course, you know, making sure we're maintaining our trails and the recreation attributes that our community's known for, and that is, and of course, key historic locations. I think Councilor Spurrel, correct me if I'm not, not only is there a collary trail, but there's also a mine site, a van house in the Bevan lands?
Yeah, over at Scott's Slope, yeah.
Do you save questions or ask questions?
Sorry?
Would you prefer to save questions?
Sure.
Just about the corridor, you know, we received $3 million bucks to make our corridor nice for the road leading into the landfill, so I'm just wondering how that works out when we decide we don't want to use that road for landfill anymore.
Let's get to the concept, I'll show you. So here's, here's sort of the overarching things when we worked with EcoPlan, that we want to make sure that the industrial line did, and, you know, understanding what our local demand and trends are, you know, what is the hole we're trying to fill within not just our community, but the region. You know, 84% of the industrial land for the region means it's great for us, but we also have a responsibility to share as much opportunity as we can with our neighbors, you know, to accommodate a wide range of industrial requirements for that stakeholder meetings alone. You know, it was gravel producers, it was asphalt makers, it was constructions, it was yogurt manufacturers, and so understanding how these businesses work, and if we're trying to create synergies, and how to locate them all in the same place, so that they have those types of connections is important. You know, certainly, as we do with a lot of business here, seeing these opportunities out of Bevan, not just to attract big business and big money, but to raise the ceiling for a lot of our local businesses in our region that need that growth room, so, you know, and again, providing a place for innovation and flexibility, having that reputation as a place where, it's an incubator, it's a startup place, it's a place for businesses that want to do things go, you know, and again, really leaning on that sort of eco-industry and green industry types of things, that those factors like the landfill gas and other things, things bring to the table for us. And that is, didn't look as good as it did on my computer.
Is there another, is the next one in the near future?
Well, I'm gonna, that's what I wrote. Well, this one here, because they do have different information, I apologize. And the first one here simply shows five simple little things. The first, I think what you would notice is in the colors is in this bright pink area, and this orange and yellow area, and these pinks areas, what we're referring to, these is two campuses, two industrial campuses. This area here is larger lot sizes, a little bit more variation, is mostly reserved for those heavy industrial activities. In around number three, this is the waste management facility, and so we have smaller, lighter industrial kind of identified areas, of smaller type campus areas, where smaller manufacturing industries can establish themselves, same within here. This area in here, where Tree Island is now currently proposed, is, and you can't see it in here, but provincial guidelines require 500-meter buffer around landfills, and food manufacturers and food producers. And so, we've identified that and ensured that one not only is a current application in front of us within the right area, but maybe that's the best area to locate similar types of industries, and so on and so forth.
Can I ask?
Yep.
So, the 500-meter buffer, is that also taking into account possible future expansion of the landfill?
Yep. Yeah, and so we know, and it hasn't really been officially announced, but there is interest even in here, from the CVRD to, for expansion room, and of course, there's more room, I think this little area around here, which is a working forest, which has an impact, but they're very conscious as well of the buffer that's required, and so a lot of these land acquisitions is not for growth room, but simply to give them, to contain what they need to do without interrupting onto other spaces and stuff, so be interested to see where those conversations go. Number two, they have these dotted lines, these are transportation corridors. So number two is redoing this access onto Comox Lake Logging Road, so that, you know, down the road, when we have a lot more particularly employee and workforce traffic, that that is an established corridor. The second one you see right here, and this is right where the entrance way into the waste management facility, and we found this on previous adaptations of a thing, and there's a road that runs through here, and this enables to keep it all within Hancock Land, around the backside of Maple Lake, and it connects onto Memorial Way, where that existing road is.
It's an existing like logging road right now?
Well, it's, it comes out on former end of Minto, which is Memorial now. So you can go around and come into the parking lot, where they have that right of way for the sand gravels. And the idea is to create a road through all Hancock Land, so it's the same property owner, that spits out onto, under that underpass, and onto Memorial Way, and so now we're directing traffic onto the parkway, and it's circumnavigating the entire community.
How close are you coming to Maple Lake?
Well, not, I haven't determined that yet, because I don't know what's there, and so, we haven't any plans where the road specifically goes, but we'd have to be mindful, and right now, all I'm thinking of is that existing road that's in there, Teco, and the others have a perimeter access gravel off the backside, you can see them, they drive down alongside the highway now.
I know when you walk, walking on the trail around Maple Lake, you have a steep bank between that gravel pit and Maple Lake.
Yeah, well, I know, that's, I guess, the side effects of digging, and they've done it. So, you know, the feasibility of it, and that's part of like, we're coming, going away, and when we start to look at some of the planning tools that we are thinking of for use on this type of thing, that we would have to explore further. At this time, it's conceptual.
I know when this, we originally did this, and Seveds did it, they were in negotiations with the Ministry of Transportation to have access through Lake Trail Road.
Yeah, and I, from my understanding, and I've asked about that too, because with them doing the water facility and stuff right now, it seemed like a good idea, opportunity to start to broach these subjects of infrastructure improvements, because they're in the area. They've had a very big trouble, it doesn't sound like there's much of a chance of getting a highway access at Lake Trail, and it's because of the Morrison Creek, and a lot of the vulnerability around that area. You know, it's the same thing, I think Trilogy was holding back too, is access around our highway interaccess, it doesn't sound like Ministry of Transportation is, it's an easy way to go when you want to get these types of things, but I agree, having access off that Lake Trail end, so that people coming down the highway could just go that way.
Try building a pedestrian bridge.
So, these, you know, when it comes to transportation, these are the types of ideas that we'll parcel together and then, and then we'll go. Number three is signifying a multi-use trail or non-vehicular trail. We recognize that maintaining that historic corridor, it kind of runs adjacent to where your lot lines would be, so the idea is to honor that trail by having a separate non-vehicular trail along the Bevan corridor, that we would, you know, name and honor the collard dam, but it would maintain connectivity between the entire land, it would run, you know, we've gone so far as proposing that it runs right down the length of Bevan, and then it goes into the development area and runs right out to the other side of Bevan. There's opportunities here, down the road, to connect trails the other way, but to have a connectivity right through the maintain of the site, have access to it for people who are working in Cumberland or working out there, you can still access it without a vehicle. And I think one of the nicest things is, around the outside is a 200-meter greenway and watershed buffer. So all this area, which is traditionally part of the Bevan lands, so we've essentially narrowed down just over 900 hectares into about 350 of, you know, 380 of usable functional space, and this keeps us, gives us buffers to stay, keep out of the danger areas, and still gives us lots of land. At the end of the concept, there's a slide that shows you what we're proposing of what's in the OCP, and you'd be surprised at how close we've actually come. And then, of course, number five again, is just again, a perimeter trail around the outside, that would protect the Morrison Creek waters and in here. This is a wildlife corridor, separating the two, there's a ravine in there. We were fortunate enough at our stakeholder workshop, the Scot from Tree Island, because he was in the development process, brought some wildlife mapping for us, so it gave us a preview, a prelook into what's happening, and this was at N5 as a wildlife corridor, and we saw that as a good opportunity to create some green connectivity, wildlife connectivity, and separate these two heavy and lighter industrial campuses.
Would there be a bridge or just something underneath the road, or?
Yeah, it's a good question.
End at the road?
It'd be like Banff with one of those big...
Yeah, basically.
Those are only one of these pictures? Oh, alright, so, this one's a bit more annotated, it's got some words, it's in your package as well, so you can have it there, just gives a bit more detail of where things are, you've got your road connectors, you've got your corridors, your buffer, you know, you've got a recreational perimeter trail, so another thing that's in here is a trail that goes around the outsides. You know, one of the works that we'll need to do down the road with connectivity is understanding where the trails are, and I think staff has in front of them, transportation or multi-use transportation type discussions in front of them, so we'll incorporate this into that discussion as well. There is this little bit here that we have talked about within this thing, about potentially incentivizing some of these industrial users to move over. Through our stakeholder workshop, there is some interest from those groups, but I mean, the situation would be, right, we'd have to wonder what that, that type of opportunity is. But as opportunities in here grow, we may see more interest from those groups wanting to relocate. This is just a cross-section of what we're, of a road section would look like, if we have the road going Main Bevan Road, we've talked about multi-use corridors. Also, when we got into the stakeholder process, it was very clear that water management, specifically with respect to the watershed and other things, was really important, so the consultants have given us some ideas around the types of features for managing water systems on-site and otherwise that we can implement. These doesn't, you know, they don't commit us to doing anything in particular, of course, this is a conversation that happens, you know, on behalf of the developer when they want to do things, but certainly for us to have an idea, to be able to show a developer the types of ideas that we want, and how we, how important these environmental features are, and how we want to protect them. I know Rob has already voiced his concerns about the cost of having all these wonderful things, but...
Yeah, this looks great. This is awesome.
Yeah, they look great, and then, you know, but we had...
Really, really like this one.
It's interesting, it stirred a lot of conversations, the first couple iterations had much bigger roads with places for big trucks to pull off, and, you know, go back to Rob, and Rob goes, well, how much is it going to cost to look after that? Are we looking, are we buying new vehicles now for street sweeping and stuff like that? So, it's, you know, part of when we come away with recommendations, and I want to come back to you with specific things, is talking to the Ken and the operations managers to make sure that they're on board and they understand what it's going to take. So this is what I was talking about within the proposed land use, is you've got A, B, C, and D here. A would be these large kind of industrial campus lots, these are 10 to 30 acre parcels. I say that, I know Ken's probably going to make some recommendations around what useful lot sizes are, they're, the more I've gotten into this, the more I've understood about planning for these types of things and being mindful of them. So we'll want to do a bit more truthing around what's the best opportunities and the best ways for us to implement that. B is a food processing hub, you can see this red line here, that's that 500-meter buffer from the waste management facility.
So no, no food production in C?
No food production or C or D. So we can move B here and over here, but C and D are within 500 meters of the waste, and so, again, they're not, they're not, it's not regulations, it's guidelines. But we always want to anticipate that guidelines, that usually the precursor to regulation, and so, the Tree Island's proposed subdivision is right in here, and it certainly gives opportunities for other businesses, if they see that same opportunity to hub in that area. C would be an industrial and sort of waste-focused diversion-type economies, same with D, again, but D I think is a bit more focused on lighter and lighter industrial, kind of smaller, like what we saw, those complex type spaces, sole proprietor more type of industry as well, and of course, there's other areas that are not, well, the waste management facility, and of course, identifying whatever municipal park or greenway, green space that we want to use. And this is sort of the calculating of what we came up with, and, you know, once we've created newly established 200-meter buffer, you may need to make some, you know, to things now, two minor adjustments to the greenway to account for existing aggregate. What that means is, right now, there's some gravel extraction happening right in where we want to establish that greenway reserve, that buffer, and so that will be, you know, finding another spot to relocate them, so that we can establish that as a buffer. And this area right here, we're proposing, I think right in this corner, is still zoned as some working forest, and moving that back over to, and moving it into an industrial. So at the end of the day, when we do a tally, this is our current calculations of what we're, of what the OCP wants us, is, you know, it says it's going to be, and this is what we're proposing. And so, at the end of the day, from the OCP, we're four less hectares of space that were in the industrial land, so it's, the OCP was pretty close.
Wow.
Yep. So when we, here, we're going to start talking about some of the outcomes and recommendations, and they're spotted throughout this report. There's a summary table or appendix to this report, which is appended to the Bevan industrial lands, that gives you much, 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 much more. I've pulled out, within my report here, the things that are, we're looking at as immediate kind of things, but if there's other things in there that just aren't of priority right now, or maybe sort of out of our control as a local government, it may be more of a private industry-based sort of recommendation, so. Proactively enable industrial intensification and densification within our zoning bylaws, so, again, if we want to do like a smaller, lighter industrial complex, making sure that our zoning bylaw allows for that type of grouping and spacing, you know, we always want to be able to have some diversity and flexibility around the types of spaces we create and who can use them. But one of the things I've learned through the industrial lands research is that you have to be very mindful of what type of uses you mix with industrial, they have adverse effects on property values and how those types of spaces are used. So, you know, we always, I always think, oh, it'd be great to have a coffee shop and all these types of other services and stuff, and what this report told me, taught me, was you need to be really mindful about how you implement those types of things. You know, their property values are vastly different between commercial and industrial, they require different types of investment, and so they may develop unevenly in other types of areas. So not that it can't be done, you just need to be thoughtful.
No, I think part of what we talked about at the stakeholder thing was shifting that our light industrial to more of that kind of mixed use, where there could be maybe some residential, or some commercial, or some, and some light industrial, keeping this industrial focused, and maybe they get a food truck or something, or, you know, something like that, instead of having the mixed use.
No, and it was recommended to us too, right? So even little things like service, like if you're going to start provide, allowing businesses that service the industries that work there, so if you're going to put a cafe in it, wait and see before what, you know, the demand is, the grouping is, and see if those types of accessory services and industries are beneficial to what you're trying to do, as opposed to trying to fit them in, thinking that this is how it's going to work now. So we also, with under potential land uses, is update the development permit guidelines for industrial development, and that's, in a short note, sort of creating a DPA potentially for industrial use, or... or specifically for industrial use around the Bevan lands. This also speaks not only just to the protection and the DPA side of things, but a big part of it is providing certainty to developers and interest groups that are out there. And the more processes that we have that are well defined and well established, the more comfort they have in going through them is going to help our business end as well.
So then do we have to have like, in our DP for the area, do we have to say how big those lot sizes? Or we could, can we do a range of lot sizes within those specific, like we have a DP for that heavy industrial area and we have a DP for those lighter fooder things? And then, but do we have to say what those lot sizes are or can we leave that open so that it's more flexible?
You were, the lot sizes would be in your zoning bylaw, that would be your control there. The DP is more of a umbrella approach if you're affecting an area. This is the area being affected within zoning bylaw. And you look at the lot size setting that you're targeting. If it's kind of you're, you're going to mix different instruments to get what you want.
But within the zoning bylaw, we could have a broad range of lot size within a specific area.
Correct.
As well as DPA, something we are going to look at is the creation of like a neighborhood land use plan. And then what that does is it allows you to adhere or create a plan for a large piece of property. So one of the challenges we have with the Bevan lands, and I've said this before, is usually we have, like the presentation before, you have a developer that owns a huge piece of land and you go into an agreement with them about how that huge piece of land. Well, we don't have one owner here and we have one owner who doesn't want to be a developer and he's going to sell, or they're going to sell to smaller groups of developers. So what are the tools available to us to adhere to a larger neighborhood plan over time? You know, again, recognizing that we may have industries at the north end start up and we have some, spot may start somewhere in the middle and we may have, you know, the, so keeping how these component parts work within each other and up against each other while we're filling in the gaps in between is an important piece. And that neighborhood plan is a tool that will allow, allow us to do that. Development pattern, I guess this is as much about phasing as other things to do. There's that conversation around maximizing options in terms of tenants and lots and sizes. There's the demand for the different types of space. A lot of the demand we get are, again, that, that small to medium business. That's transitioning to a medium to large business, so they need room to grow. There's lots of room right now for 2,000 to 5,000 square feet for small independent operators who are operating out of storage units and things like that. There's lots of room for people that are doing small manufacturing and types of things and stuff. So, you know, we, there's also demand for giant warehouses. So we need to, within our plans and within our tools, making sure that we're hitting that sort of diverse range of interests and demand. In large format, single use tenants, and these are your big warehouses. And they're the ones as well that, that instigate a lot of your traffic because they have long trucks and big trucks coming and going constantly. Development potential, of course, there's tons of aggregate out there. There's lots of interest in aggregate. How that aggregate is utilized and extracted from that landscape? Do we need to follow the same lines of a dig, big a dig pit, big pit? Or can we say go knock down that mountain there and flatten this landscape so we can build on it? You know, these are, again, I'm not sure of the role that the municipality has in these types of things. But certainly through my roles, things that we can talk with developers and builders and stuff alike and see if we can facilitate some of those ideas. There's going to be need for significant investment in infrastructure. You know, most likely this is going to come through industry. But I mean, that's water, sewer and electricity. Most of them will come with this first proposed development in the subdivision. You know, that's going to be your telecoms and your electricity and even water potentially. Sewer is probably a much bigger project that's going to require a bit more thought. It's probably more of a five to 10 year type idea of identifying what's the best way to treat that type of stuff. Potentially onsite or how are we going to get it into our system? And then again, just acknowledging what's happening right now, the types and definitions of industrial activities are rapidly changing. You know, and, and there's much more, there was a trend rate to allow more amounts of accessory commercial activities. But you want to be careful how you mix things. It's much different to have a large manufacturer being able to retail. And so Tree Island yogurt, being able to sell yogurt out of the front door than, than creating spaces for smaller businesses that are focused on retail and stuff like that. So being mindful of how we draw those lines about the differences within our zoning bylaws and stuff.
Can I ask a question about servicing? Do we know where Fortis Gas is at as far as plugging the land for gas?
Yes, so they are still in negotiations with the CVRD over a long-term purchase agreement.
Okay. So is it possible to piggyback on their servicing of the land? If they're going to be putting in a pipe? Is it something that, that can we piggyback on or is that something that needs to be completely separated?
It's a good question. If Rob was here, I'm sure he could help. I know that the trenching for, for gas is shallower than you would for utility. And then it also just takes scheduling and alignment of projects and those types of things to happen. You know, it's, it's, if we're not, you know, I can see us wanting to be part of having those types of conversations depending on how that infrastructure is provided. I mean, if we are the ones building it and paying for it, it might be a bigger concern. But right now, it, you know, private industry is going to look after Fortis when they sign this long-term purchase agreement or are going to, part of their cost is already committed to putting that stuff in. So, you know, this is understanding sort of where our lines and what our responsibilities and what we can do, understanding that kind of role because we're not the landowner, we're not the developer. So understanding where we're helping, where we're hindering is really important.
And if there is synergies there, it's great for us to be able to facilitate.
Yeah, and you know, it's certainly a conversation we've had at a staff level. We've asked for this, the question. And it's just a matter of seeing if that sort of opportunity comes.
And right now, there's no, there's hydro to the dump?
Yes, and then it ends. I believe that's phase three. And that's it. And I guess getting back to my recommendations. My recommendations to council is to refer this back to the steering committee. We'll have a much more conversation and involve staff, planning and development services, of course, and operations. I'll also put in as, as an alternative is to simply accept the report as it is now and direct staff here to start working on an implementation plan, which would be bringing back what we think are the key sort of recommendations and options and into a plan that we can utilize to, to move the Bevan opportunities forward.
Thank you. Any questions? And someone would like to move the motion?
Move that picture.
I love that picture. It's an old one, right?
I can move that the committee, that committee, the whole recommend to council to refer the Bevan industrial lands and set the industrial plan to the industrial development steering committee for discussion and provide feedback to council with consideration.
Second, all in favor? Carrie, do you know when that meeting will be?
Beginning early September. So September 14th is the council meeting. Targeting to come back to you.
Thank you. That the committee received the council policy on video recording of open meetings report.
Please proceed.
Second, all in favor? Carrie.
So I was just bringing this policy to you here just to make sure that it's in alignment with how you see your meetings being videoed and livestreamed and which, which meetings are done that way? And we've just limited it to council meetings. And so maybe the whole public hearings and your committees wouldn't be recorded in live stream? And one thing to think about, well, all these are public processes for sure. The landscape is good in exchange for everything being on the internet. So we're very conscious of protecting people's privacy. You know, back in the day, you didn't have to worry about that because everything was just in the office. So now that everything's on the internet, we're no more aware of that. So that's the reason why we wouldn't have a public hearing livestreamed on the internet. Because this is, it doesn't feel appropriate to have that level of, of access to, to individuals' information. So that's why we went that way with that. So just limiting it to council meetings for the time being. And just looking for any feedback or comments or questions.
Counselor Brown? So is this meant, this is post-COVID or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so until, while we're still in COVID, the committees will all be recorded, but they're not live?
They are right now with COVID because they have to be publicly accessible. So once, this is for once we get the video system into the council chamber.
And we're back meeting in person.
And we're back meet, we have in-person on-site.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions? Great, thank you. Next, recommend that council, council, the committee receive the court base report in January to June. The receipt.
Second.
All in favor? Carrie.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. So as counsel recalls, as part of the strategic planning process there, what staff were working on, we're working on a tracking process that we'd be able to monitor and update everything from our strategic priorities to any major projects that staff are working on. As well as, I'll call them major capital projects. So anything that would be significant either by cost or, or a significant project. So what, what you have before you is our first quarterly report, which will allow staff to be able to monitor and update those reports on a, on a regular basis. The long-term goal will be, this will be something, once staff get familiar with the, the program that we're using here, which we're still working through that, that process. We will allow, we'll set this up so that it can be online and that the community can see these updates on a regular basis and they'll be able to interact with those updates. But right now, at this point in time, we'll present them to council on a quarterly update. And so the, the first number of sheets that you have in front of you are basically updates relating to our strategic priorities. And really, at this point in time, I'll, I'll just jump ahead a little bit. There is also included in this package, and I'll pass it over to our CFO here, is that there's an update for the financial plan as well as some updates related to protective services, bylaw, building and development. And also your council activity report, which is basically council resolutions. So quite a large package there of information. And certainly our intent here is to keep council up to date on all the activities that, that are underway. So you know where, where we are with certain projects and certain work that we're working on. The, one of the things that I'll just, I'm just sort of jumping around here a little bit, but the, the activity tracker, which is basically council resolutions, some of those items are very connected to strategic priorities. So you may see them in both areas there because they are, you know, some of those act, or direction that we've received from council are in relation to strategic priorities or they are in relation to, say, capital projects. So they, they may be in two areas there, but our intent is to maintain those and provide that information to council. So maybe before I hand it off, in relation to the financial report, is there any questions related to any of the other? And that's really what we're here. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer anything related.
I like the way I was just saying this and clear. I'm, I'm just wondering about, I don't know if you said this, but in the completion, the current completion, when it says like 36% and then 3% ahead?
Yeah, so this, this report here, we're, we're, this is one of the pieces that we're working on. So one of the things that is, is underway here, this, this report will eventually say on target, potentially completed. Hopefully that's what we're saying, or we'll say in progress or track back. These percentages are ones that when we, when we do source this out completely, you'll be able to see how far we are. So I do apologize, that's not exactly like the, the information. But what it says, as an example, use the first one here, construction of the new fire hall, 36%. So what that means is 30%, 6% of the project is complete and we're 3% ahead of what that overall, that overall project is. So we will be able to drill down to that information. But it is right now, that's what we're working on, is trying to understand that sliding scale and what that, what that works out.
3% ahead of the original timeline?
Of the 36%. So we're actually, if you wanted to run on, our track would be 33% would be the timeline. So it's based on timeline. So for example, the fire hall, let's say to December 31st this year, this, this timeline here would mean that we are 3% ahead of what we were expecting to be at this point in time. Moving forward, there's a number of ways we can, we can present this. And one is a percentage like we are here, or it would just say on track and behind. So we're just, we wanted to try a couple of different options there.
I like the, I like the percentage. It kind of gives you an idea of where the project, instead of just being like almost done.
Yeah.
You know, it's a more precise. And then it creates a little bit of competition within the office. And then you want to be in the green zone.
And who are you?
Right, your department, you want to have all the greens.
Everybody likes being the green here, right? So some of, some of those, some of the way we're tracking this will, as we get used to the system, it may change a little bit. But certainly that's something that we'll provide to council each, each quarter. And you know what, if at any point in time, there's a request, but our, our intent of this is to maintain this on a regular basis so that staff aren't having to do these monthly or quarterly updates. Basically, if, if council requests it, we could pull up this, you know, right away and we'll know the exact status of a project. So if there is, if there is a question, we'll be able to answer that right away about what that, the status of that project. You'll see in the comment section, we've really included the majority of the ones that were, is a recent comment or an update. And so we will also be able to have a section that will be able to say that the project may be, let's just put, doesn't ever happen, but there's an issue. We will be able to know that there's an issue there. Never happens. Or you know what, well ahead of schedule, on budget, those type of things. And staff will comment on that and provide those updates. And the, the other thing too is this system allows actually the, the past comments to be able to be looked at. But we'll report out on maybe the last one or two comments so you can see what's happened in the last quarter there, so. So that's that. And then the other, the other information is for council to receive. And if there's any questions, if not, maybe I'll pass it off to our CFO as he can speak to our financial report.
And through the mayor. So attached to your committee and the whole report is your second quarter financial results for Village Operations. The financial summaries are of, as at June 30th and they have comparisons to your 2020 financial plan and also your 2019 year-end audited amounts as well. So revenue expense items are currently within budget and all departments are in a surplus position. And so basically, I, I don't see anything significant to note at this time. You have your four statements, all at June 30th. Your statement of financial position, statement of operations and accumulated surplus, your statement of change in net assets, financial assets, and a reconciliation of your financial surplus, financial statement surplus to your financial plan surplus. For the budget variance, you, you'll note on the statements that I've removed amortization for you. And that just provides better variance analysis to your, to your financial plan. Because those amounts are not recorded until year end and they really are not within, they're, they're not a cash amount. They're not within the budget manager's control. You can also note that based on the fact that there are, you know, at this point, we don't have year-end adjustments made and also some of the invoices as of the end of June are not. and also some of the um, invoices as of um, the end of June are not um, yet posted. So you can say probably there should be about forty-five to fifty percent use of your financial plan. And uh, you'll see that on your statements. So I have some notes on uh, page one hundred and thirty-five, starting on page one hundred and thirty-five, um, of uh, you know, variance for your statement of financial position. So I've given you a few um, few ideas. You know, we always have quite a bit of cash at this time of year um, because we've collected, or we've um, collected a lot of our taxes. And but but we have a significant amount of those taxes that have to be paid out to other taxing-collecting authorities. And those don't go until um, June and right before August, or sorry, July and right before August. You also though have um, a fairly significant um, accounts receivable or tax receivable balance, you'll see. And that quite often is very high for June thirtieth normally because you still have that July second date um, of tax collection. And that's your last day and that's where a lot of uh, your payments are deferred until, they want to wait to that last minute. But of course, uh, at this year, because of COVID and the province allowing for a deferral of um, of very, like, quite a few of your classes until September thirtieth, um, you've collected seventy-six percent of your tax receivable. And in fact, you normally do collect between ninety-two and ninety-four or five percent in other years. But if you just look at the two classes that were due by Ju- July second, um, at, by that deadline, you collected ninety percent of those classes in taxes. So we look, uh, we look towards September thirtieth, we'll start probably collecting the others um, around that time. And then some other variances for you, um, on some of those balance sheet items. And you also have a statement of operations accumulated surplus. Uh, you have some revenues, uh, not much more to explain there. I can answer some questions and operating differences as well. So if if counsel has any questions about that statement, I can also um, answer that, uh, extra stuff. And attachment three is your statement of change in net financial assets. And at this point, you are in a net financial asset position of four point seven. But if we uh, borrow everything that we're supposed to borrow, we'll go into a net debt position of two point um, seven percent. And your uh, financial plan surplus is uh, just over one point seven million. So if you think about um, your taxes, uh, your tax revenues for the municipality is three point two and we're halfway through the year and half of that would be one point six, so it's kind of on target. And that is, in a nutshell, uh, how you're doing for halfway through the year. And I can answer any questions as well.
Questions?
Um, yeah, so the, the uh, the tax due date for residential didn't change. So that's basically the ninety percent that we collected was was from residential and so the, the uh, the seventy-six or the the deficit that we're seeing are in the other classes because of the provincial change.
Yes, through the mayor, you have uh, you had about nineteen percent of those other classes that you collected and then ninety percent of class one and two because they didn't defer you, your utilities. Not exactly as well. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. You're a good report.
Great, thank you.
It's always been a much worse situation, given what's happening in the rest of the world.
Yeah, it'll happen next year.
What's that?
That might happen next year. I feel like it's coming later. Two years, bigger way of. Yeah. Yeah.
We're doing fairly well.
Really?
Compared to some communities.
Yeah.
Yeah, some communities are really getting hit hard.
Yeah.
But we're doing okay.
Through the mayor, we benefit uh, by being a smaller organization. Some of those bigger ones, that would have been a big huge hit. And also your reserve policy is has, is quite a, a benefit for stability.
Great.
Things like this happen.
Thank you. Next, still about the services.
Worship, just if there's any questions related to that or how.
I do, actually, but I gotta find the page. No, it's not there.
Um, there he is.
Counselor, did you have a question?
Just a comment on ha- uh, one forty-five, heritage alteration permits. The Waverly is still there, out of compliance from two thousand and fifteen. Is, I guess we don't have any big sticks to wield.
Uh, your worship, that's correct. Um, there is, is an outstanding item and unfortunately, the owner, that original uh, heritage alteration permit, no securities taken. Uh, we have sought uh, the advice on it previously. In regards to the business license, uh, at this time, we're, we're still trying to work with the owner to complete on that last measure. And s- uh, hopefully, we can resolve that without further need for, as you say, a big stake.
My question's on page, um, one forty-seven. And it's got these, um, the PLRs and they're expiring in November twenty twenty, one of them. Is, is there going to be any adjusted, adjusted because of COVID? Or is this required by us to extend or by the applicant?
Uh, dear worship, depending on the subdivision, uh, they are allowed to extend it for one year within our bylaws. Uh, however, the extension, a second extension or extension beyond two years is not allowed within our bylaw. Uh, unfortunately, none of the COVID measures are being applied to um, subdivision in regards to delays, that sort of thing. Uh, and as a lot of this work has not affected the, the uh, construction industry is still going and uh, middle-aged lawyers, surveyors are still working. Uh, none of the COVID um, uh, relaxation timelines have been applied.
It's interesting that they hit everybody else, everybody but our staff. Awesome.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? No? Okay, protective services. I'm sure Clayton could answer any of your questions.
Fire chief's excited.
Yeah.
Said there's a delay in the getting a new truck out because of COVID.
Um, so the, in the bylaw services summary, there's like a calendar chart. But there's just June in there. Is that intentional or?
Yeah, uh, so one, thank you for uh, uh, providing that. So one of the things that uh, uh, our bylaw is started doing is they'll be uh, maintaining a monthly uh, report and they they haven't been doing that. It's basically, uh, unfortunately, to this date, when we started pulling this together, realized that they had only actually had a, a report for all of two thousand twenty. And so moving forward, it will be monthly. But right now, that was based on just what was uh, had been tracked for two thousand and twenty.
Yeah, give us an indication of like where we're heading for.
Uh, definitely, the the areas that have been noted are there. With with COVID, it was mentioned that COVID hasn't impacted some of the other areas. Certainly bylaw, that has impacted that. Uh, it's, it, what it's really resulting in is more responses to, uh, in the, you know, in the early days there, in March there and April, um, people, you know, reminding and educating people about social distancing, physical distancing. Some, some complaints, not, not a lot, there wasn't a lot, but complaints about uh, uh, individuals that may not be practicing those sort of, uh, you know, um, prior, uh, orders or directives from the province there. Uh, so they did, they spent most of the first part of this year responding to those and and helping support the community through that that process. Uh, things have definitely returned in the last month here to responding to things such as, you know, parking issues and um, uh, spending time out at the lake there, dealing with, you know, uh, working with the, at the boat launch and other things. So there's a lot of, it's, it's returned quite quickly to uh, uh, normal, which in in some cases is uh, um, a bit challenging when the, like, it was a switch suddenly. It's, it's been back, so uh, but uh, yeah, it hasn't been very uh, as busy definitely for for the, in the bylaw services as it has in previous years.
Yeah, I imagine that boat launch has been a nightmare. Just watching the steady stream. But I, I actually have thought that we could ask our ca- our campground managers to let us know when the lot is full, like, when the parking is full. And then we can put a sign out for, you know, the entrance or somewhere to say it's full.
Don't go down.
Stop.
Staff right now are working on a few different ideas and a few different concepts that we'll read back to counsel. There's some, and the sign is actually one that's being considered that we would have it somewhere either, uh, you know, before you pull down Lake Road or outside of town. But there are a few options that we're looking at. There is also uh, some uh, understanding that potentially even some of the federal grants, the, if structure grants may be able to assist us in some infrastructure improvements out there. Boat launches are actually very popular within a number of the grant programs. So we'll, we'll, we're narrowing down what those options are. We'll bring that back to counsel with uh, various options for for the grant programs. But there's definitely some, some challenges down there, you know, they, definitely volume, but um, we're trying to coordinate, you know, what the, the area down there is, you know, there's some, there's some design challenges really, and that's what we're, we're actually heading down there on Thursday to, as a, as a group there, to look at some different options there. But uh, it's a, it's a busy spot for sure.
Well, if we did limit motor size, that was probably.
I was used to it enough.
Sorry?
If you just, if you limited the, the motor side, the engine side.
And the size of the boat.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of the boat, the boats that go by are huge. They're too big for the lake, some of them, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, I may be incorrect, I think that's staff or there's a, someone had investigated that.
Yeah, the fisheries and oceans.
It's not, it's not in our jurisdiction. I mean, certainly we, but the, to actually regulate the uh, motorized boats on the water. But uh, however, saying that, that's one of the things we're going to look at is maybe the, like, the, the boat launches, certainly a limited size that can be, you know, uh, allowing certain type of size of uh, boats out there. So those are some of the things that we'll, we'll bring back to counsel.
I think that's what we found out last time, is that we could regulate the size of the boat on our boat ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which would help.
Yeah, which would help, for sure. For sure. Um, and it doesn't, Mike's report for the Protective Services Report doesn't speak to specifically any, or I didn't remember, uh, whether he's mentioned uh, going, having to go to the lake or fires at the lake in White's Bay.
He, uh, the, I've spoken with the fire chief on a few cases. He's usually, uh, well, has been fairly regular. It has not been uh, as, as regular as it has in past years. It's actually, there's, there's been much less uh, responses out there. Um, I know early in the year, there was a bit more. Um, but him and I, we were actually just talking about this uh, last week and uh, it's actually been, they've been spending more time um, responding to uh, responses on the trails than they have been out at fire-related, like, uh, like on the lake and so forth, so.
Does people break in their stuff?
On the trails? Yeah, there's been a lot more rescues and pullouts on the trails then. And that is definitely one I I will share with, I mean, it's a quarterly update here, it's definitely, we're, we're just reviewing the um, we're just getting the the latest data from like our trail counters and certainly, there is a, a, a larger uh, participation on the trails. And we're hearing that across the island, about, you know, everywhere from Tofino to Archville to Victoria. It's, it's quite incredible that the, the volume, you'd think that, you know, things are down, but we're, we're just, like many other communities on the island here, we're experiencing a, a large influx. We um, but saying that, it's interesting as well, we also believe it's typically the numbers come out of our, the um, Yellow Gate. That's where we know where the, the big traffic is from tourists. We're seeing it spread out.
Yeah.
So we do think that there's also a lot, uh, and this is just um, you know, more gases a little bit. There's no real hard facts on this, but uh, it, it's much more spread out the use. So we do think that there's a lot more uh, locals that are home, staying home, riding more, running more on the trails more so. Just because typically, the, that's not the trail they use, uh, entrance they use, it's the other ones. And so, yes, it's a spike, but uh, we're, we're thinking it's also contributed by a lot more people that are staying home.
Yeah, I think that's part of, we're all, we're all staying here, not leaving the island because we live on a beautiful island and a beautiful community. But everybody from the urban centers is coming here and adding to that. So normally, we would go away maybe or.
Recently heard that UROC, they had their thing this weekend, um, or the week, whatever, they have volunteers down there looking for more members and stuff, but also talking about their aggressive trail building and that they're building more trails. And I really want to start getting into this conversation about more, more trails.
Yes.
Like, for real, I don't think anybody here disagrees.
Well, and.
Did they not conversation seriously and quickly?
And there seems to be an active campaign on UROC's part. I, I know it's part of their fundraising and membership drive, but it is actively promoting trails and uh.
And trail building, which, yeah.
And trail building is happening and.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to have, do we need to have that discussion first or should we have it with them?
Uh, you know, I think it might be an opportunity to, uh, I mean, like a lot of the groups, they do have a chance to come and provide updates. So I think, I think a starting point may be uh, for, I mean, I could speak with uh, with their president and uh, and see if it's an opportunity to come and just have a conversation that counsel can have a, you know, at this point in time. We're, you know, I, I, I think it'd be a good time to have a conversation. I would also, uh, I, I hear exactly, and I, we definitely are seeing the same thing, but I, I also would say they've been probably one of the strongest groups to help us communicate to the trail users when we had issues early and, and when we have. We've actually noticed very quickly response, like, when they, when they communicate out, if we have an issue, like, don't use this or the trail. They are, they've got a very proactive communication. But in relation to some of the challenges, you know, maybe a, a conversation and a, just to find out what their, their future plans are, we could certainly invite them to come speak to counsel.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
The next committee of the whole would be nice if we could have them. Maybe we should have a group come at every, stagger them a bit so that they're making presentations to counsel. Committee of the whole seems to be the most appropriate so we can have a good discussion.
I think, we were talking about Cold, Cold Beach, White's Bay. If CVRD finally has somebody doing the job because like down there the other day, there was twenty teenagers camping out on fire on the cold slag. I pointed out that I live at the other end of that forest and if that fire gets away, my houses are gone.
They had tents, tents and stuff they camp in.
Yeah, but I ran into the guy in the truck, Al, who is employed by the CDID. I was, I said, oh, am I glad to see you because I can push the light. So he gave them till nine o'clock in the evening to clear out. They were a really nice group, they didn't say.
I think people just don't know, they're just like, oh, this is beautiful, let's go camp out here. They have no idea.
They have placed signs up and the signs disappeared.
Well, they haven't yet, they haven't redone them. Like, like before, they were blue spray, spray painted, no camping, no fires when the cabin owners did it. You can't read that. I said, your first thing is get paint, spray paint on the trees, no camping. Because it's definitely far worse than it's, than it ever was under the cabin owners.
Okay, I'm going to move counsel along because it's getting late. So outstanding action items is the last item in there. If anybody has any questions?
He's dropping through a lot of stuff. Looks like I'm crazy.
Potion to adjourn.
Yes. Second, potion to adjourn, favor, Carrie.
Sorry, whispered that. Potion to adjourn.